He also told me that you were my client.
Well, that was correct.
Can you admit that in public?
We are.
He's the oldest of the youngest.
Is that right? What's his percentage of being a local?
This is like.
It's six months, six months.
Are we online?
Yes, we are.
Sure, if you just get.
That's okay.
But I can't.
Yes, you do. Thank you.
Because I'm, I mean, I'm just wrapped around there now.
Athletic.
Yes, he's kind of a trainer.
It's like, it's like physical therapists only athletic. Physical therapist, if I said that. Anyway, runs it for us. Good friend, and I went to see him last night at the hospital. They didn't think he'd make it through the night. Saturday morning threw a pulmonary embolism with based off blood clots in his legs. And I mean, I went up. Everything talked at him because he's unconscious. Fifty-eight. Which I look at as pretty good. Trainer, athletic trainer. Well, life is short. You're more like the grass. What's the best line from Ecclesiastes? It's vanity, all is vanity. I said John would get rid of Ecclesiastes in the bed. And he goes, Dad, what's uplifting about this? Well, what's uplifting about it? It's too much for my standpoint. The overall of this is that God really is in charge. And that this physical life is mine to protect. It's a small part of the truth. And the second part is, oh, the birds, I can pull it up on YouTube. The bird song, there's a time to, I have to read Ecclesiastes. There's a, there's a time to live, there's a time to die, there's a time to fight, there's a time for peace. I love the song the way they do it, it's really good. And that, you know, it's, it's hard for people to wrap their heads around that this is a. This is such a small portion of it. I just need, I need to keep that perspective because, you know. You know what? Four and a half months before I turn sixteen, my wife becomes a figure. She did sixteen. Every year, four and a half months, I'm very good. I've got some air holes. Never found most comfortable. Well, some slip on those.
I just said that.
But honestly, I'm wearing these shoes I've got.
Like a sauna.
You know, in some parts of the world, we would say they're. No, I can't wear the ones that's got. Women should ever wear heels. It's so, it's so not good. It's hot.
See?
Oh, in the old, in the old offices, I put a lockbox on it.
Well, because that one controls.
Set it on sixty-two.
Eddie, right? Yeah, it was on seventy-five. Something, somebody got a little crazy there.
All right, we'll call it commissioned order. Do we have any minutes or reports?
I do, I have the, the treasures monthly report was filed with us in the University of Missouri Extension in Polk County. Annual report was filed.
Great. Thank you for recording that for me. And if you want one of those, these are, there's a stack of these things sitting here on my chair.
I did that. She gave them to me yesterday.
All right, Commissioner Committee Liaison reports our announcements, upcoming meetings and/or events. Commissioner Training, you're going to do the radio, I confirm that with Warren.
Home building tomorrow night, tonight, I mean.
All right.
And at Business Fifty.
Meeting is tonight.
At four, from four to six at Marine Corley.
Drop in.
Okay. Then unless I'm mistaken, the only item on our agenda today is facilities planning discussion. So Carrie, I'm going to turn it over to you.
I had to ask Carrie what sleeper was.
Just so you guys can see, I thought we put a board here.
Okay, that's perfect.
I would have thought you would have had an easel with heads on both sides.
It's a tough crowd today, Carrie, I tell you.
All right. Well, we're really here to just give you an update on the three options we've been looking at for the old jail. As you know, last time we met, pulled out things from the file to kind of review the history of where we came several years ago. And we noticed that the documents on the wall there were a little bit out of date. And so Michael Carafino and Debbie Maulsner have taken the time since our last meeting to update these. The point of these are, starting with the Carnegie Building, the building we're in, the annex, and the courthouse, they've all been updated. And Michael, you can flip through those and show them. They've all been updated, color coded according to current occupancy and square footage. So I would recommend that we print these out bigger, spread them out on table and have a discussion. It's not really the agenda for this meeting.
Right.
But it tells you how you're currently using everything and you can trade things around. So these are all now up to date.
Oh, good.
And with, and if you look over to the right, they're, they're color coded by use. For example, light blue is courts. And then they also have square footages over here. Okay? The other thing we have is options to use the, the, the old jail. And just in summary, there are three options. We'll simply put, option one is to reuse the floors that are there with minimal heavy renovation. Maybe light renovation of finishes and things like that. But basically, the discrepancy between the floors or between the courthouse and the jail would largely stay the same. That's minimal. The second option is to take out one floor, the second floor, and drop it down to match the courthouse. That's the second option. The third option is to leave the alley level, what's called ground level, and take off everything above and rebuild it. That's option three.
Okay.
Those were the, we had several options last time that were old ones in the file. And those were the three that kind of came out at the last meeting.
What? Yeah.
Somebody take my pointer.
You want to use mine?
All right, lock the doors. We're not leaving until we find a pointer. Everyone has the right to remain silent. But not the ability.
The first, the first drawing to concentrate on is this section right here. This section. Here is the alley level of the jail. Here's the elevator vertical shaft. And here is the courthouse. So this bottom level is shown as renovation for, we've already done the Sallyport.
There's a button on the side, Mike.
Possible renovation for inmate holding and control will be on this floor. The next floor up would be renovated for offices, but also a secure entrance to the courthouse complex from the west. Okay?
Okay.
We were trying to solve on-grade access for secure entrance. So you would come in basically where the old sheriff's house is. That would be the secure entrance. It would be revised to be ADA accessible and things like that.
How do we get from there into the main part of the courthouse?
Getting there.
Okay.
And then the upper floors would stay just like they are and be renovated for offices and/or additional court space as you determine. Option one has a very small amount of floor removal right here. On the first floor, right here, a very small amount of floor removal. Okay? About a roughly twenty by twenty square.
What do you mean by floor removal?
Take out the floor slab.
Oh, actually take the slab out.
Just cut an area out.
Okay.
To do that, then we can put a landing at the courthouse level, which is this black. Anytime you see black on this section of plans, that's new construction.
Okay.
So put a landing in at the courthouse second floor and go up a half a floor to the old jail second floor or down a half a floor to the old jail first floor.
So we don't lose a floor.
Pardon me?
We don't lose a floor.
We don't lose, not in this option. We don't lose a floor. We have to cut out a piece to have access to those two levels.
Yeah.
See that?
Split floor area.
Yeah, exactly. It's like a split floor. When you're walking down the courthouse on the second floor headed north, you go through an opening in the exterior, old exterior wall. And there'd be a split, up or down to those two levels. The remainder of the floor would be, the jail would be available for offices or whatever you want.
Okay.
Question, in doing that, with that split level, would you replace or put a door in the, replace the car in the elevator so you could use the elevator at either floor as well?
No, there, if you look, no, that won't work. But we do have a chair lift tucked into that, right into that landing and stairs. So you could use a chair lift. If you come in the secure entrance from the west, you go over to the chair lift, you go up four or five feet and you're in the courthouse.
Okay.
Okay? So that is what, what we thought was the minimal renovation. But if you notice now, all the floors are lined up. The bottom floor, the ground floor of the jail has steps up into the courthouse, but there's really not a lot of public traffic there. Okay? The next floor up has that landing and split level to combine the second, first and second floors of the courthouse to have access to the second floor. First and second floors of the jail to have access to the second floor of the courthouse. And then the third floor of the old jail and courthouse already aligned. Okay? So in terms of cost for this option, you would be.
Hang on real quick. How much usable square footage do you end up with then? I mean, I've.
About between eight hundred and a thousand.
Per floor?
Yes.
So the, the floor we cut, the first and second floors are going to have about eight hundred square feet usable? Does that sound about right?
This, this box right here is, is about nine hundred square feet.
Okay.
This is about six hundred square feet. In the center, we're going to have some stairs and some corridor and things like that. The whole footprint of the jail and sheriff's house is twenty-four fifty.
Okay.
Okay, so you have six hundred in old sheriff's residence and eighteen fifty.
In the jail.
In jail.
Okay.
So we really have eighteen fifty in that jail, but we're taking some out for cutting that floor out, stair, landing, corridor. And then you have the whole six hundred footprint of the old sheriff's residence.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I jumped ahead on.
That's all right.
If you took out a hundred and fifty square feet for the stairs, that would leave you with twenty-three hundred square feet in that whole footprint?
Yes, but you're also going to consume some of that with corridor to get to the rest of the building. So the, the square, the square, Michael pointed the square on the right. That isn't, that's a nine hundred square foot.
You go where your pockets are, you keep checking like that.
I think Larry took them.
Larry, you have a point? I got it, I got it, I got it. Sorry. This, this right here, this right here is nine hundred. This right here is about nine hundred square feet. Here's the, the landing, the two stairs, the chair lift, a little bit of corridor maneuvering room. You could leave in that old stair that's there if you wanted. I mean, that would be cheaper than taking it out. But you gain a little bit of floor space. And then here is the footprint of the, the old sheriff's residence. So in the secure entrance from the west, we just put in a little office. You would have room for two bathrooms if you wanted there and a secure lobby. So once you go, there's a metal detector. Once you enter here, you can't go past and into the courthouse till you get through that, through that door. Okay?
Okay.
So that seemed to work out pretty well. Again, renovate, the costs of this are whatever you decide to renovate the remaining part of the ground floor of the old jail, i.e. inmate holding or control.
Cellar is.
The cellar is. The next, and we, if you look back in the old files, we have several layouts back then that were contemplated for.
Right.
So it'd be a matter of, we don't have those today, it'd just be a matter of pulling those out and talking about it. The next floor up, less the stair and landing and chair lift, you have two floor plates there for offices. And half a floor apart is access to the courthouse. Right there would be that chair lift. And then the next two floors up are available for offices and/or court. Now, we also talked last time about possibly adding a floor on top of the old jail. In looking at the nineteen thirty-five documents, I mean, it's still a possibility. Not totally excited about it because in looking at the nineteen thirty-five documents, this level, this slab right here was built as a roof. What I mean by that is it's lighter construction than those floors.
All right.
Now, can it be beefed up? Obviously, with money, you can do anything. But the, this, this floor was not built, this floor was not built exactly the same as those. Okay, so I'm less excited about a floor on top.
Okay.
Okay? Let's go to option two.
And the roof of the sheriff's house, really, that's the third floor of the jail.
It becomes, it becomes.
We have to take that roof off if we're going to really expand. To get maximum space, we'd have to take the roof of the sheriff's house off to be able to expand over onto that footprint.
Yeah, if you want to maximize your footprint. This does, this option one does not contemplate any changes to the exterior of the building.
Okay.
There are no changes to the exterior. We do have, I should have mentioned, some possible options, you, alternates or things you could also add to this. And one, one would be that fourth floor we just talked about. That's something we could look further if you were really pressed to put that in. You could replace the windows. The floors are going to stay their same relation to the window. There are no, they don't have a view right now, so if you wanted to see out, we could replace the windows. And then the exterior, getting access to a secure lobby on the west. We've got a couple of old sketches in the file. One is simply extend the sidewalk along the west side of the courthouse northward. Just extend it over and pick it up. The other is to create a stair and/or ADA ramp from the street directly into that.
Right.
Okay? But that's something that we would have to finesse and figure out, is it better to come sideways or from the west this way?
Okay.
All right, option two. Again, option two is, oops, sorry. Is to renovate the existing old jail, including demolition of one floor and construction of one floor. This would be, this is the floor that actually loses a usable floor.
Okay.
Okay? So again, looking at the, the section right here on the bottom, you would have renovated space for inmate holding or control. You go up one floor and you would take out what is currently the second floor of the jail and build a new right in line where that landing was, but a new right in line with the courthouse. So you see the dark? That's new. That's a new floor. It replaces the floor above it and it turns the space below it into one of those interstitial type spaces. It's only three or four feet deep. And you can put mechanical equipment and stuff like that in there, but it basically takes this floor up here and moves it down to here. And it lines it up with the courthouse. So you have complete removal of that floor. You have the demolition cost of that. And you have the complete building of a new floor at the same elevation of the courthouse second level. We still preserve the exterior skin of the building. Okay? The problem, there's some additional cost with that. When you do that, when you take this floor out, this wall wants to behave like a hinge. Okay? It wants to, it, it weakens that wall. And so you would come in around the whole perimeter and stiffen that wall because the floor that was a diaphragm is now moved.
Right, that makes sense.
Okay, so there, we put in a little bit of cost into the budget for that as well. And then going on up from there, the.
Now it's the second floor.
Yeah. The, the upper floors are renovated for offices and/or courtrooms. So you now have a floor lined up with the third floor, lined up with the second floor, and the basement's a few steps apart. Same issue with the blue on top, decided to add a floor up there.
Okay.
Still have the option.
It doesn't get us a lot of space, does it?
What?
It just doesn't get us a lot of extra space at all.
No, it actually.
It gets us a very small amount of extra space.
It's actually more money for less space.
Yeah, great.
Square footage on that?
Lot less, lot less, Debbie.
You lose a, you lose a nine hundred square foot plate. But, but the, the positive is coming from the second floor of the courthouse, the whole floor in the jail is the same level. As opposed to coming to a landing and splitting it with a chair lift. Okay? That's, that's the positive. A visitor on the second floor of the courthouse may not even know they've left the courthouse building. Okay?
Okay.
All right, the third option is the most invasive.
Invasive.
It leaves, it leaves the.
Sally's board?
Sallyport ground level. It still has an interstitial space because what's the, the lid? The lid of the Sallyport would stay there. But from there up, everything would come off. From here up, everything comes off. And so you would build a new floor at the second floor of the courthouse, a new floor at the third floor of the courthouse, and a new floor possibly at the fourth floor of the courthouse. And you would be, again, you would not know you left one building from the other when you're walking inside. This would be a steel structure. You know, we know what's there is con, is a concrete frame. So we would be going back with slightly lighter to, to be as conservative as possible. So we'd go back with a steel frame and composite deck, concrete floors. For the purposes of this exercise, we've kept the footprint the same. But this one, this one would allow you to do whatever footprint you pleased. But you can see, here's the renovated ground floor. This becomes interstitial. And then up from there, this is all black. That's all new construction. We happen to draw it as the footprint. The other thing that this one allows you.
So we could draw a square, I mean, we could just have a straight rectangle. We don't have to have the jogs and everything, right?
You don't have to have the jogs, but there's major equipment sitting right here.
Right, I know, heating and air.
So that's, so that, that's an additional cost. But you would have, you probably have new heating and air with this. The other thing that this, this option gives you is at the end of this axis through the courthouse, at the opposite, at the north end is another egress stair. So you have the ability to enter and exit that end of the building. Now, it could be, probably wouldn't be public, but it could be.
Kills your space though.
Judiciary or whatever. You really have about the same amount of space here. You have an eight or nine hundred square foot footprint. You've got some corridor, you've got opportunity for restrooms. You would still have a secure, you could still have a secure lobby from the west. It's more of a direct shot in because we're not dealing with the existing structure of the sheriff's house. It's going to be direct in and direct into the courthouse like that. And this one is twice the cost of, this one's twice the board.
The existing space board. The one that has the existing space in the courthouse. I want to know how big courtroom is. You don't even put it up, I'm just. How big is, how big are the courtrooms square foot wise?
That, that space, it's a good question. If you look, that space is.
Where's the big courtroom on the third floor of the courthouse? Third floor courthouse. Right there. How big is that courtroom? I can't see. Yeah, how many square feet is that? I can't read it, it's too far away.
Three thousand.
Three thousand?
No, no, I'm sorry, that's his whole area. Mark, just, just look at this shape.
Right, that's what I'm looking at.
And look at that shape.
So basically, we could put a court, a full-size main, what's currently the division one big courtroom could fit into one of those three spaces.
That space is as big or bigger than current courtrooms. I don't know about the biggest one, but it's, it's comparable to the other courtrooms. Now, you would still need some, some support spaces, the judges.
Yeah.
But yes, that is, that is, in this option, you know, we have more flexibility with ceiling heights.
We also, we can move the stairs and create that office complex if we need to do so.
But you can also, but you, that plate, remember, was showing up on other floors? We can get courts in that.
Right, okay, that's why I was just trying to make sure that we're not.
It's not going to be the high ceilings of the current courthouse.
That didn't bother me any. Being able to have a courtroom.
Yes, you could.
That's fully functional is what's critical.
We're going to do two jury trials on serious cases simultaneously.
Do three.
Yeah, three, well.
Because we have Pat's courtroom.
Well, I'm saying big, I mean, it's harder.
Oh, I know, yeah.
In jury, jury rooms, of course, are an issue.
Okay.
Any of these add another elevator or?
Nope. We tried to use existing egress. Now, we could add an elevator.
Can I ask a question here? From my perspective, see this space right here?
Uh huh.
Which would be the same on each floor? Is that sufficient to put a stairwell in?
Yeah.
So you could put the stairwell here. And then that opens this entire, on these upper floors, that whole space can be integrated.
Yeah.
Because with the stairs there, it destroys the use of those two spaces together.
The question is, could this stair be over here?
Could it be over here?
Absolutely. Could this be a bigger open, more open floor plate? Yes.
And that, that really is no, that's not a cost factor at all because if you're going to build stairs, you're going to build them somewhere, right?
Yes, options one and two did not have a stair.
Now, there's existing staircase in there on one and two right here.
Yes, that's not an egress stair.
Right, maybe it's just an existing stairwell.
That's convenience, yes.
Okay.
That stairwell that you got drawn in there, I mean, is it, just seems large. Would it have to be that big or is it just cheaper?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what we're saying.
It can be shrunk a little bit. I can tell you what the dimensions are. This is, this is, this is a five foot width on each stringer. It's a five foot landing there. And we just lined up the wall in the courthouse with the wall there. Could it be shrunk a couple feet, probably? But maybe not even with, that'll be a calculation of the occupants that are using it.
Okay. All right, let's get to the real brass tacks.
Okay.
Dollars and cents.
Option one, what we have in there is architectural costs. In other words, the construction cost and the architecture. We've had some pretty detailed discussions with structural. We've put some numbers in there for mechanical, electrical. Still really need to talk to them about, depending on which option you want to go with, but we have numbers in there. Long story short, we have, including subtotal for construction, we put a ten percent contingency. We came out to seven hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Wow, that's a lot more. Oh, which one? That's a lot more reasonable than I thought we were going to be talking.
And eight, and eight hundred and fifty dollars.
I don't know, that, but we may have to take that one out of the architect's side.
Yeah. Now again.
Let's just call it seven seventy-six.
Now again, we, we've, we've put placeholders in there for some of the mechanical and electrical. We would want to talk to Greg about some of the existing systems and the overlap with the courthouse. So we have placeholders in there.
Okay.
And I'm not, this has the word draft on it, I'm not giving it to you today. The real, the real key.
Can I just see it from a, I just want to see the breakdown. How does it break down? You know, how much, how much of that seven seventy-five is structural versus? You know, how much, how much of that 775 is structural versus mechanical?
It's not on here. I have it by floor.
Oh, okay.
I have it by floor.
I wouldn't let him see it.
And, and also a bit like, that includes some renovation on the ground floor for inmate holding. But as you know, there's a lot of options for technology and inmate holding that we don't have run to ground.
We don't have to necessarily do anything on that, that floor.
That's correct.
The advantage is, is because we can start adding more, you have more...
As I said, we don't really have to do anything on that floor.
It's easy to create three more cells down there without changing the floor plan much.
How much usable square foot this option was?
What's your definition of usable? Do you, do you consider a secure lobby usable space? Or are you looking at office space?
Office space, office space, courtroom space.
Okay.
I mean, you know, I realize there's going to be some bathrooms and stuff in there, but...
See these, see these boxes here? Those are about 900 square feet.
Okay.
So that's 2,700 square feet. That, that, and that. That does not include the ground floor for the jail holding.
Right.
Does not include a future floor on top.
Right. So you got 900, 900, 900, and then that space right there, too.
Plus the 600, yes, thanks, thanks a lot.
So 3,300, 3,300 square feet, right.
But what about that intermediate space where the stairwell is there? I mean, is that?
I wasn't counting stairs as usable space.
Okay. Okay, it says corridor.
Yeah, I wasn't counting that because you're going to have people going through it.
So that, so on the second and third floor, that corridor is going to be on both floors?
Yes. Does it need to be exactly that size? No.
Right.
This is just a di, this is not a floor plan. It's a diaphragm.
Sure, sure. So we got 2,700 plus that other six.
Plus another, plus another six here.
Thirty.
Becoming a secure, that's office and secure lobby, metal detector. That's showing two restrooms there. So this is six and six.
Okay, so 1,200, so 39, 3,900 roughly. Okay.
That's option one.
Yes, sir.
Option two.
The, the other thing to keep in mind on these options is, on these costs is, whether we have the, the price exactly right today, the most important thing is the relevance between them.
Right.
One and two are very close to each other.
Three's going to be more expensive.
Yeah. Two is, is only about $100,000 more for less space. Now, remember, we're building that whole new floor.
Right.
On the second level. But we've got a lot of structural re...
So it's 875?
It's 850.
Yeah, boy.
I'll get you, I'll get you all email user pennies.
So when we lose a floor, you're going to flip the, flip the page there. When we lose a floor, for 850, we get 915, we get about 2,400 usable feet.
Same numbers you have. 1,200 here, plus one, two.
Losing 900.
No, 600 here.
No, you're losing the interstitial.
Right. So 1,200 plus 1,800.
That's easy, 3,000. You got, you got to have lost more than, than 300 square feet.
Yeah.
Nope.
Is it because the stairwell?
No, you lose 900 square feet.
I thought, I thought you said it was 33 on the other one.
Well, depends on how you calculate it. It's either 33 or 39. It's 3,300 office space plus 600 for the lobby, the secure lobby.
Well, if you're...
This one can, keeps the secure lobby 600, but you lose 900 of the office space.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, for, for option one, I would do 1,200 plus 2,700.
Yeah, but the lobby space...
But you just counted it on this one.
I, I mean, I'm not counting it. I'm keeping those two numbers broken out. I view the lobby space as its own separate space. It's not really usable for courthouse or offices, even though it's got one small office in there. That's...
It does have an office and does have restrooms.
That's more likely a bailiff's office or something like, security station office.
Right.
Or assessor's office.
H O E L S C A T R.
We love our assessors.
Option three. All right, let's go to option three.
Okay.
I thought you, I thought you were going to enter interstitial space.
We got the crawl space.
Little guy at Six Flags.
So what do we have space-wise on this one? We have more space available, don't we? Because we lose less to corridors and so on. And we add a floor. We lose a floor, we add a floor, but we don't have as much wasted space because of the existing...
That's correct. So, I mean, those footprints are 2,450.
Right.
This, this footprint is 2,450.
So how much?
So, but it's really, the usable space looks like it's 1,900, 1,900, and so 1,100?
Yeah.
This is 1100. Three times 11 is 3,300, and two times, is that six?
There's something to the person that's...
Eight, six, seven.
Okay.
Basically take the 600 out for the, for that entrance, you know?
This is, this is now more like 1,400 now because it's...
Supposed to 12.
Yeah. So this is 1,400, and this is 1,100. But if you move that somewhere else, it's 20, 22, 2400.
Could get close to 7,500 square feet.
Yeah.
What's heck in here?
Now, the other thing is, this one, it's not on here, but this one would be easier to add another floor.
The fourth floor.
It's got the fourth floor added.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
So how much was?
So we're going to have, what did we come up with again? 1,400 plus 3, 3,300, so 4,500 of office slash courtroom, right?
New construction.
And then also, give or take, 700 feet for the secure entrance.
Yes, sir.
So we're talking about 5,200, give or take, really usable square feet, not including bathrooms, stairs, corridors. Okay. Guess we need to sit tight now and see what that number is.
Oh, sorry.
Option three.
1,655,000.
Close it.
1,655,000.
1.6.
That's way better than I anticipated.
You're not supposed to say that.
It is.
We had, we had, with those last sets of designs we had, every option was way more than this.
We, we kept this at apples-to-apples footprint, Mark.
Right. But I mean, even the adaptive reuse that we had in those other designs were more expensive than these, these are. So, I mean, that's why I'm pleasantly surprised at all these numbers. Yeah, I mean, it's...
Well, we were, we've, we've had a meeting with structural now, too, and talked about what are we going to do with each. Each one has a pretty different approach structurally.
Does, does this count the removal of what's there on each option?
Uh huh, we have demolition costs in there, which we bumped up because it's inside confined space.
So basically, any one of these three options, if you took all the furniture out of this room, that's what you have.
Yes.
And you, it's finished to being ready to be furnished.
Yes.
Okay.
Would you have total square footage on option one? What did you come up with?
3,300 for office courtroom plus 600 for a lobby.
And that's on three floors?
Yes.
So we had the 2,700, three rooms at the 900 plus the 600.
Plus one 600, 3,300, and then the 600 square foot lobby.
So we're on the same page there now. Option, I'm just skipping option two for now, but...
I don't like, I'm just going to be honest, I don't like option two. I think it, it does not, it's self-defeating.
Sure.
It hurts our purpose more than it helps. So that's not even worthy of discussion.
Then option three was, how much total square footage you have?
I got 5,200. That's 4,500 office and courtroom plus 700 for the lobby.
How did it help? Because we lost so much nonusable space.
Space on this website here. Yeah.
Where did we gain so much space?
That's a sliver between...
Oh, we added a floor. That's what it is, okay. It's like, how the hell did we come up that much more?
1,100 there. Here you go.
900?
700.
I mean, it's, both those options are...
And then one, one, one floor is the, is the entrance.
Secured.
Right, okay. So if you don't count that.
And that one, we can actually make at grade. I mean, that, that solves all our accessibility problems with that entrance, right?
And we're getting rid of the old jail and the old sheriff's house. We're knocking it all down.
This one still has...
Well, we're keeping the basement. We're keeping the Sallyport.
Keep this.
Okay, sure. And then build up.
All right, hold on. Sorry. Chris, you're in the middle of something.
Yeah. So I'd still come up with 5,200 or whatever you're coming up with. So if there's 1,100 times three, that's 3,300. And then 700 times two, 1,400.
That's four, that's 4,500 total, right?
4,700.
700 there.
700 there? Oh, 50, 5,400, my bad.
Right, total, minus, minus 700 for the...
For the lobby.
Yeah.
4,700 for office and courtrooms.
Yes.
Okay, I hit 4,500.
This option, and this option still needs the study of that approach from the west. We still have the choice of...
Right. Which way do you come in?
Which is very simple. Extend the sidewalks and tear into the ramp area or come in from, from the street, which is more of an elevation change.
Okay.
But more obvious to, to the public driving by the building.
These, uh, these restrooms, are they going to be adequate in size?
Don't you really want to ask that question?
I want to ask it now, though.
It's a historic building, okay?
I see.
And we have the restrooms that are in the courthouse now, which are more than there have ever been.
Okay.
If you built a new building, you would have more restrooms if you got to to code or to recommendations. So...
I just don't want to see the core get out.
Yeah, we saw this, this area right here. It's kind of convenient. We could put in another couple of restrooms to help with folks down here. But you probably don't want us to do a toilet count for the office in the courthouse.
Understand. But I, I guess, you know, on Mark's idea, if we took this stairwell and we put it here, we could possibly take these restrooms.
Yes.
And put them there and maybe make them a little larger.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but that's still...
But putting that stair...
I realize it doesn't give you any more usable space, but I just...
The, the reason to move the staircase, in my mind, is so that you can take this office space and attach it to that office space so that, for example, that hypothec, that could be a big courtroom, and then this area could be the judges' chambers attached to the courtroom. I mean, you could put bathrooms over here. I mean, that's just, that's taking the blocks and moving them in different directions.
We're just discussing the floor.
I understand, but I guess...
But taking that chunk has implications because I don't know the extent of everything sitting out there. There's some stuff out there that's not in this budget.
Right. My concern was that these look like one-holeer toilets. And, you know, you get a bunch of people coming out of court.
Well, if you, if you notice, the previous plan had zero restrooms.
Right.
Because that was the discussion several years ago.
Okay. That's something we can work through.
Yeah. I mean, I like this option, candidly. I think it gives us a lot more flexibility, a lot more usability. What's the exterior on it? As you've programmed it in, what's the exterior?
It would be masonry with, with windows commensurate with the courthouse, but not identical. I mean, it would...
Analogous to what we do at the jail where we try to get similar stonework, but not the same.
Right, right. And we have, if you remember back in the past, we have options showing that it's a masonry building. It's got the window fenestration, the, the pattern of the windows are the same scale as the courthouse, that kind of thing. So it looks like it belongs there.
And they ought to match up with this. They ought to basically match up because they're the same floors, so it'll all look basically the same across.
That's exactly right. And that's exactly what we did three years ago.
Yeah, I remember that.
We've got that option.
There were several going for more historical...
Yeah, we went from, you know, it'd be more expensive to perfectly match the stone. You don't want to, you know, that's, that's not...
And I'm sure it's necessary.
But you could go all the way to the other extreme with a glass box sitting over there. Probably somewhere in between.
I mean, you say masonry, are we talking stone, stone, or are we talking split face block?
Not split face block. It would be, let's put it this way, when the public looked at it, they would call it stone. Now, we might call it precast cement that looks like stone. But yes, it would look like a stone.
Okay. So it would have the historic feature?
Yes, it would not look like split face block.
Did you hear that?
Yeah.
It would basically look historic. It would look compatible with the courthouse.
Sheriff's house would be gone, though. So which one was the biggest deal? Was that?
Well, and the jail would be gone. Everything in option three.
The biggest deal's courthouse.
But the jail wasn't the part that the courthouse...
The biggest deal's courthouse. Biggest deal's courthouse.
These costs have your intent B's in there, too.
Yeah.
Come on, get on the page.
So option two is pretty much out?
It just doesn't work. I mean, it's a...
I mean, I, that's, that's the way I feel, too. It's not enough, not enough space.
So then, then it comes down to the option, you know...
The only, the only advantage to option two is it gets rid of that split.
Right. But, but we lose space in the course of doing it, and it costs more.
You lose a floor plate.
Yeah. So, I mean, it seems to me option one or option three, my preference, just looking at it's option three. That just makes more sense to me. Because it allows us to design the space for future usage as opposed to, we're stuck with how it's already carved up.
Depends on our budget.
That does depend on our budget.
So I like them both. I really do. I like getting a lot more room. You're looking at more per square foot dollar-wise for option three, but we're going to get more square footage, so...
How many square feet is over in the Carnegie Building that's being used?
We have to add these up.
What do we have on assessors?
That's roughly a 3,000, 2,500 square foot floor plate, just looking at it.
Can I sit?
It's pretty chopped up, though, isn't it?
That's what I was, that's what I was...
Sorry, Jeff. Need light.
I don't need a picture.
This is all, this is...
You got 18, 1880 plus, so 1965.
You gotta warn us when you're doing that.
Plus...
I know you do on purpose, Debbie.
I don't think they're using any of that, are they? Is that storage?
Assessor probably uses about 1,000 square foot.
Well, according to this, the assessor's using almost 2,000 square, well. Hey, Greg, is the assessor using that back section of the Carnegie Building?
Yes, all back here, but they use the other...
There's a break room. The old GIS room is there that they don't use anymore.
But they're using that for meeting room now.
Okay. But...
They got a break room and all back here.
18... Talking almost 2,400 square feet on that assessor floor.
Just on that one floor, it's 2,400?
Of, off, of using a space that's being used.
It's bigger than I thought it is.
Yeah, it's a lot bigger than I thought it was. It says the assessor's got 3,000 square feet.
Small rooms, that's why it doesn't feel like...
Public defender's 2,100 square feet, although you're including storage.
It's not yours.
And you're talking 11.
Hope you finish the basics.
There you go. It's just the light's so bad. To do it one way, if I hold it straight out in front, there's no light. It disappears.
Yeah.
There's a lot of storage space built into that.
Yeah.
It's kind of useless.
He's got a lot of personnel over there, too. They're scattered them around. I mean, he's about as bad as the collector. I mean, he's got all kinds of rooms.
He's not paying attention. We just moved you. Congratulations. We're getting the public defender out and we're putting you in his space so that you'll be underneath, you'll be, you'll be, you'll be next to, you'll be in the same building with the assessor. You'll be, you'll be, you'll be next to, you'll be in the same building with the assessor.
I did not start that, don't stir him. He's been a good neighbor so far.
We thought about moving the assessor, but it's easier to move you. You don't complain as much.
My plan is put the assessor's personal property where the reporter is now.
So what was our price tag on any of this? Did we ever talk about?
Makes some sense. That actually makes some sense, you know that?
What's that, personal property across from him?
Put the personal property where Roddeman is and put Roddeman, because he, all he does is real property, over with the assessor. That actually makes some sense there, all right?
How did you do, do that?
So where were we at on price tag?
So we're seven-seven-five versus one point six.
No, I mean, did we ever say what we were wanting to do on that? We just had that million set aside for a solid port.
We have the reserves built up, and, you know, we've been talking with the auditor's office that, you know, the reserves are now at a level where we ought to look at spending some of it on facilities, as opposed to expanding programs, cause programs cost more, you know, programs are forever.
Well, and we talked a little about it yesterday, about being progressive, but, you know, we've still been real conservative with the numbers. You know, this is, so do we wanna look big picture with the more footage?
Uh.
Or a price tag?
You know, although we've tried to not add any personnel, at some point, we are gonna add personnel.
Well, we're gonna get a new court, we're gonna get a new judge at some point, that's gonna require a courtroom. That's, that's only a matter of time. Is that gonna go through the legislature this year?
Um, I don't think so, but, I mean, we're, we're, we've got five judges, I mean, we've basically got a traffic judge, uh, three times a month.
Y'all have used this office too for some proceedings, so it's not, like, it's not gonna get used, so. How much more space do we want for county business?
Carrie, let me ask you a question. If we run dual tracks, option one and option three, what more do you need to do to give us a more firm price number? Or is this firm enough, you think we can base, use these numbers to base our decision?
To me, the, the two takeaways from this meeting, one is to look at, they both function a little bit differently. And the other is that option one versus option two is about twice the cost. With that extra piece, extra flexibility and any extra space. As far as the numbers, I'd be happy to, you know, take another look at the numbers with each discipline and break it out by.
I, I guess my question is, I mean, you feel somewhat confident those numbers are close enough that we can rely on them, not to the penny, but, you know, they're not gonna go from, they're not gonna double or triple. They're gonna be in the ballpark right on.
Unless you totally lose control.
Well, I mean, because that's the, you know, if, if it's one point six million, it's one analysis, if you come back and say, oh, it's really two and a half, it's a different analysis.
It's not that.
So we could say it's one million and two million, essentially would have it covered, even if we added a handicap bathroom or a golden stairway or some crap. Which we're not gonna do.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah.
What kinda construction timer are these? Give me an idea of the process, you know, from a, from a, from a point where we would make a decision, go. How long to do the plans, how long to bid it, how long to do the construction?
Let's start with construction first. The, the construction of one is gonna be six to eight months. The construction of three is gonna be ten to twelve months.
Okay.
One's a big deal.
And the design time is gonna be, documents is gonna be, let's say, three to four months for design time and a month of bidding.
On both, either option?
Yeah. One is simpler, but it's messier.
Right.
Fourteen to seventeen months. Ten to twelve months.
Over, over in the room, keep this.
Okay.
I think you also have an effort in there, but obviously, it's already on your mind, but looking at all these other departments, those color-coded plans, and who is where.
Right. Yeah, it's all dual track, I think, we have to look all that at the same time. This is a decision that, if we're gonna make a move on it, we're gonna need, I mean, I, my suggestion is we're gonna need to move more quickly. Because there, once we pull the trigger on one of these options and go, then we can really start laying space out across the board. Till we make that decision, it's impossible to know which space options you're working off of.
Keep in mind, uh, option three, you have more flexibility in your footprint.
Right.
Decided, just for today's purposes, we kept the exact same twenty-four fifty footprint.
Okay. Okay. I think we got lots to think about.
Can we get, uh, can we get those drawings?
I didn't know, I didn't know if there were gonna be changes from today.
Actually, can you leave those boards? That's easier for me, I, if you want them computerized, I like the boards frankly.
That's fine, I mean, yeah, I just have the print copy, so, just, just to look at, just to take a little closer look at.
Still one, two, and three?
Uh, for me, you leave them all, that's, that's fine, if that's okay.
Okay. When do we wanna bring it back?
Week.
Jeff?
We got CCAM the rest of this week. What do we got going next week, meeting-wise?
We got an eight, I know we got a meeting on the eighteenth. Pretty.
It's getting full.
We do?
Uh-uh, that's a Friday.
You be quiet. It might have been March twenty-first. Wait, that'd be a Friday too.
Seventeenth's a holiday, eighteenth we have a meeting.
I, I'd like to talk about it a little bit now, and, you know, I mean, I mean, if, I'd like to just kinda throw it around a little bit.
Okay.
I mean, I'm okay. I mean, I know which way I'm leading.
Me too.
But, uh, anyway, I mean, I'm, I'm leading towards option three, just cause I think we're gonna need more space, but, um, I mean, I think there's a lot, just from my perspective, we could talk about this for, forever and not make a decision. You know, funding's gonna come into play, but, you know, we got an aging Carnegie building, we gotta decide what we're gonna do there, and, uh, I don't know.
I, I lean towards option three also, I think it, it gives us a lot more flexibility. Obviously, I think we've all agreed, we probably wanted to lay that floor out differently, but it gives us more flexibility. I would like to look at, is there any space available on that jog? I mean, currently, there's some mechanical equipment in that jog, but I thought there was still also some free space there.
Yeah, we can run that to ground.
I don't think it's a lot, but it might be enough to stick a staircase on that side and be able to open that whole space up. Even a few feet might make it.
Option one and two, we're using the existing envelope, the existing structure, so that, that footprint, and we just copied that footprint for option three to be apples-to-apples.
What do you think, Jeff?
I was leaning towards one to start with, but the amount of room that we're gaining on three has got me leaning that way.
And, uh.
So I'm right in the middle of the damn things.
And option one, are we?
It's a price tag.
What are those windows like? Are we replacing those windows, are we doing?
The windows were, were not in the process, no, they were an option at the bottom.
Okay. So.
They're, they're, they're water on it, they're falling apart themselves.
So, I mean, that, that's gonna be a pretty substantial cost, I would assume, to replace all those windows.
Yeah, and they're pretty different between the sheriff's residence and the jail.
So if you had to guess, uh, tear out all the windows and replace, a hundred thousand? Two hundred thousand?
For the windows, shouldn't be that much.
Well, I'd have to number that, let's say at least a hundred thousand, why couldn't you have done it against?
Over close to, close to a hundred.
For just replacing the windows.
So you have to remove the envelope, you're gonna have to redo the opening.
You're gonna have historic reproduction windows in the sheriff's residence, and then you'll probably have something relatable to the jail, unless you want to replace the historic character of the jail, which is.
Right, but I mean, aren't there some bars and stuff on some of those windows?
Yeah, so there's a lot more than just taking a window out, yeah.
Really give views out of jails.
Right. So we could easily add, say, a hundred thousand dollars for windows to option one.
And we could have a better one for you in an hour.
Yeah, that gets us a ballpark idea though, I mean, I, I'm still just rounding it a million and two million, just to, cause you're gonna have different things in it that are gonna come up.
We got receivership money that we could use, and then we have.
Don't have much of that, y'all used it on the sirens, oh, you didn't.
The other thing is that, that access for the secure log is two different, those two options we talked about are pretty different. One is just extend the sidewalk over, the other is make a gesture towards Monroe Street. And we have old sketches of that, with, you know, steps and ramps, and it was.
It's a mess. It was a mess too, as I recall, because the distance from the curb is really tight, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of, we actually talked about at one point, making that entrance punching through the sheriff's office.
Yeah, right.
Because you're at grade. It's, I think, I think the only option that works is extending the sidewalk, I don't think the other option works.
Extending the sidewalk from where it currently is? Oh, yeah, cause you have such a ramp issue.
Which preserves the hot, even though the entrance becomes Monroe Street, it preserves the high street being the, the main point of the courthouse.
Cause there is a tank underneath the ground there, right, that we should probably get rid of anyway.
Tank for what?
Backup diesel. Diesel for the generator.
Yeah.
Based on our experience over the last nine years, anytime you dig anywhere, you're gonna find things you don't wanna know about.
Judge, welcome.
So, funding, um, we, you were out, but talked about using some of the receivership monies, but.
I mean, the basic thing is, we've built up a very large reserve. We're about ten million?
Eight, nine?
More like, yeah, I would say more like seven.
How much we got in receivership? Yeah, there's not a lot left in it, but, and I said, that's exactly what that receivership would, would have been.
If we took the receivership, and we took a million out of reserve, we still end up with a huge reserve compared to what we need, and we're able to do the entire project.
And we're looking at that over the next two years, cause this is not gonna happen overnight, so.
We built, this last year, how big was our, what was our year-end surplus this year? We had another surplus.
About three hundred and fifty thousand.
And we're still generating surpluses.
I mean, I vote to move forward to with option three.
I agree.
Kind of on the fence with both of them.
I understand, I mean, it's, those are big, big differences in cost, but I, I don't think we're gonna need any less space in the, in the future.
If you want some time to think about it, I mean, we can always take this up next week. I mean, it's not like, it's not, this is not a decision that has to be made today.
No, but I like to keep rolling.
I do too.
We're meeting next week one day, right?
Eighteenth.
Let me chew on these two for.
Okay, will you put it on the agenda for the eighteenth?
Cause I don't wanna make y'all go through and do numbers for both of them, I'd rather get one, and we pull the trigger and, and go and progress.
To that end, can you prepare a contract? And then we'll figure out which option it is, one or two, and, or, excuse me, one or three?
Very proud of the point, Greg, from that, that unit out there, excuse me, in the notch, still the courthouse?
Yeah. Could, the courthouse.
And, uh.
And there's also two small units out there.
Obviously, options one and two, let it stay there. Option three, um, if you wanted to expand the footprint, that unit could potentially go on the roof of a new structure, to gain the, the land area for that.
Yeah.
Those are things we've worked, that'd be part of. That'd be something we've worked out, but again, that's within the mechanical budget of the whole project anyway.
It's something to look at.
We're still, it's still gonna keep us under like a two million threshold. And that's what I was looking at while ago, I don't think you're entering between a one million and two million. Cause even the windows, we talked about, we'd have to change them windows out on option one.
Yeah, option one did take into replacing the windows.
Oh, I didn't realize that, yeah.
Again, today, the point of today was to look at the three options and how they function, and to see the difference between the two, how they relate to each other. We went from one to three at twice the budget. So we'd be more than happy to get a little bit more detail on the budgets of whichever ones you want to look at, that would be a good idea.
Well, the only more detail I'd be interested in is three, cause I just, I'm struggling to see the real merits of, of option one. But with all, you know, I, I mean, I think we need to have consensus up here on this one, it's a big project. So let's put it on the eighteenth. You guys prepare contracts, so at least if we decide to pull the trigger on the eighteenth, we can just go, as opposed to having to bring you back again and then go on. Sound good?
I'm good.
Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just like the old jail, I like the old sheriff's building over there, I think it's neat as hell. So I'm kinda struggling to just knock it down, but I, it's hard for me not to gain another twenty-one hundred square foot while we're doing this. It just, it makes sense to, to do that, so, but, yeah, let, I just want you on it.
Okay. We'll take it back up on the eighteenth. Thank you all very much for your work, we really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
Have y'all given any consideration where offices will be?
That's gonna be a component of laying, the, where's that board at? The board that shows all the space, we're gonna get those blown up into bigger sheets, and we're gonna lay them out here on the table and start looking at how to move office space around.
And, I mean, that's kinda where this decision, we can't decide where the offices go before we decide that. I think we need to decide that, and then we know how much room we got. Can we move the public defender over there, get rid of the Carnegie? I mean, we, twenty-one hundred's a, that's a lot, that, to get that over here too. So, where you wanna go?
I'm, I'm happy where I'm at.
Public Works, we can probably put you out there by then.
That's fine, I'll go wherever you stick me.
Well.
Henley?
Henley? And what's the, what's?
Don't turn it on me.
One floor here, do you recall? What's one floor in the annex? I'm just curious.
Cause I, if we can get that collector, and if there's nothing else to, it would be nice to have the assessor all together though, instead of broke up in two different spots.
About a five thousand square foot footprint?
Per floor?
Yes, yeah. This building.
I understand that, but, but if that's.
Yeah, lots of wasted space here.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I said, it doesn't seem that big.
That's what's wrong with America, they don't get enough exercise. Gotta toughen them up, man, we get four inches snorer, by once go home. I know what you're saying, all right, I'm just joking. That was yesterday.
All right.
Stir, stir, stir.
Anything else, come before the commission. Here none, entertain, motion stand recess.
So move.
Second.
All is fair, say aye. Aye, pose, motion carries. Thank you all very much.